The purpose, we'll call this meeting to order. The other members of the committee are councilors Walsh and Edwards, both of whom have been on the council for some time, so uh don't necessarily need to be here for this. But councilors Perez and Govan, um for your edification, we have uh not every year, but I've tried to do it every year for the last like five, well, maybe four or five years, going back to, I think it first started when councillor Hurst became council president. And then um we've done it on an as needed or periodic basis thereafter. So um the purpose of this meeting is to just do like a tutorial on uh the rules of the council, the operative Massachusetts laws, talk about the difference between the rules that apply when we're dealing with special permits and zone changes, and then the different rules that apply when we're sitting in our normal capacity and dealing with like ordinances and financial orders and and that kind of stuff. So um it's primarily been beneficial to new councilors, but um we also usually also get participation from councilors who have been here from some time and ask questions about things that have come up. So I have a form that I first made with Wayman Lee, and then supplemented with attorney Wilson, and then most recently with attorney Davis. I haven't worked with clerk Oyola on it yet, but um a lot of the things are sort of the same concepts that we go over. So but really, the idea here is just to have a conversation about some of the rules, answer any questions you have, and I'll just go through uh the form that I've got and the tutorial that we've built on a little bit over the years. And feel free to uh interrupt as I go. I should start by saying that um while I am a lawyer, I am not the council's lawyer. And I didn't stay at Holly and Express last night. So this is just me like trying to be helpful, not trying to be like an annoying know-it-all or representing things that I shouldn't be representing. So everybody will make their own um conclusions, and everybody's free to speak to the law department or whoever else they'd like about interpretation of any of this stuff. But the goal is just to be um to be useful and to try and give um not my interpretation, but you know, the specific facts about how these different things work. And so Marcus asked me to do it, and here we go. So um alright, so let me just see here. Okay, so Gladys is Gladys is coming on in a few minutes, I understand. But before, maybe because Gladys is gonna be on in a few minutes, before I start and sort of start running through this outline that I have saved here on my computer, which is about two and a half pages long. Do you have anything like you want to make sure that I cover or like questions before we get into any of it, or you want to like just address it at the end?
Um, I don't know. I think address it at the end. I just wanted to say I really appreciate this because you know, every um entity has their different um rules and nuances. So I'm just really glad you're doing this. I appreciate that.
And on my behalf, I have the same sentiment. I think um going through it and seeing what applies, does not apply, and what I think is missing for me to ask, I will do it while we're having the conversation.
Okay, good. So um I uh I'm not gonna be good at checking the hands in the queue, and I don't think we need it for this one. So if something comes up, just just interrupt me and you know, take your camera off mute or whatever. Alright, so now it looks like Alan is joining us. Thanks, Tim. We're just about to get started. Okay, so so at the outset, I kind of want to set the framework for the different aspects of rules that apply to what we do. We've got the charter, okay, which is a Springfield-specific document that talks about which branch of government has what power over what uh tool of government. And earlier today, we just saw how the courts can interpret the charter and whose responsibility is what. And I'm personally very happy with that result, working on that for a very long time. And that was a charter issue, for example. There's also two other statutes that apply and interpret the charter. They're known as chapter forty and chapter forty-three. Those are the the chapters under Massachusetts general law that say, for example, whether or not it's the legislative branch or the executive branch that is vested with a particular power. And so the charter has to be read uh in combination with those other two chapters, chapter forty and chapter forty-three. There's another chapter uh that applies not to the charter, but to our zoning powers, and that's chapter forty A. That's known as the Massachusetts Zoning Act. And that's not to be confused with chapter forty. Two totally different things. And chapter forty A is the chapter that talks about how you grant a special permit, how many rule, how many votes are required, what notice do you have to send, what are the appeal rights, who gets notified? All those kinds of things are spelled out in the state law forty A for zoning. And then um there's other, I'm not trying to say this is the only law on the subject, but I'm just trying to break it down into the big ones. The charter, chapter forty-three and chapter forty, chapter forty A, which is zoning. And then we've got our local rules, which are the two thousand and two rules and orders of the uh the Springfield City Council. Those get updated every year in a somewhat ceremonial vote. It happens at the first meeting of every year. And um rarely, if ever, is a rule change proposed, but that's the meeting at which you can propose a rule change. You guys might remember I did something, a rule fifty-four this year. And uh those rules are how we kind of govern ourselves and overlay those other state laws. Okay, so I'm gonna first talk about some of the powers that are vested with the council generally under chapter forty-three and chapter forty and the charter. So these are like our, not our zoning powers and not our local rules, but our our general high-level powers. So under section fifty-six of chapter forty, the council has the responsibility to set the residential tax factor. This is the factor that determines uh what rate residences and businesses will pay on their property tax bill, and that happens annually. The setting of that factor cannot happen without an affirmative council vote. Until an affirmative council vote takes place, bills cannot be sent. There is no exception. There is no default rule. There is no, oh, if you don't act by this time, it automatically, no, doesn't work that way. We set the rates, and if we don't send that, set them, then the city can't send the bills. And if the city can't send the bills, then the city goes under because we got no money to keep the lights on. Another uh section that deals with council powers generally uh is the, it's called section twenty-one D of chapter forty, and this is the non-criminal disposition section. And so this vests with the council the power to set almost all, but not all, fines and fees in the city of Springfield by ordinance. So how much do you pay for a building permit application? How much you pay for a special permit application? What is the fine for parking in a tow zone? What is the fine for parking during a snowstorm? Those things are all set by the council under our general powers, uh and they can only be set by us unless we delegate that power to someone else. So sometimes you'll see, like, the council will have an ordinance, and it'll say, the DPW director and his or her discretion will set the fine, right? That's because we've delegated that authority to that person. But um without that type of delegation, uh it's the council that sets the the fines and the fee schedule for all municipal permits and violations. We're also joined by councillor Hurst. Thank you councillor Hurst for joining. Um, okay, the next thing is land transfers. This applies to all uh transfers of real estate uh in fee, meaning, you know, you own a piece of dirt, city of Springfield, or you own a building, you want to convey it to someone else. That deed cannot be signed by the mayor unless it's authorized by the council in advance. And uh that is again under chapter forty, and uh it's section fifteen A. The same applies to long-term leases um of municipal real estate, and the same applies under a separate section to contracts that extend for over three years. So uh the mayor has contracting, excuse me, authority without council approval for three years and under. Soon as he or she wants to have a contract for over three years, uh that needs council approval. It doesn't matter the term if you're dealing with real estate, no matter what. If it's a conveyance of real estate, you have to come to the council. You may hear me over time, and this is a little bit of a sidebar, I guess this is a little editorializing. Sometimes they'll come to us and say, well, we want to have an RFP go out for, let's say, you know, DPW vehicles. And uh we want it to be for a five-year lease for DPW vehicles. And they come to us and they say, well, we want your authority in advance to enter into these contracts for five years for leases of DPW vehicles. But we don't know yet uh how many vehicles we're getting, or how much it's gonna cost, or what the terms of the lease will be. Maybe we've got some general parameters, but we don't know specifically. And additionally, we don't know who the winner of the RFP is gonna be. And so it's not uncommon for the city to come to us and ask for that permission in advance. You'll notice over time that every once in a while, I vote against those because I think that it frustrates the purpose of the three-year requirement. From my perspective, the purpose of having that statute that says the council approves all contracts more than three years is because it's a recognition of the fact that those contracts are material enough that they should require our approval in order to enter into the agreement. That power, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, is frustrated and circumvented when we grant authority to enter into those long-term agreements without knowing what the terms or the other contracting parties are. And so uh it's not, you know, in certain cases, it's more appropriate than others. I don't vote against all of them, but you know, sometimes I do vote against them, and it's for that reason. Okay, so other powers, general powers of the council. We, under chapter, a special chapter, forty-four, section thirty-two, we uh must be provided the budget on an annual basis from the mu, from the mayor. And uh we have an obligation to either cut or approve the budget as proposed. One important thing to learn early on is that the council has no legally binding authority to reject the budget. Been there, done that. If you reject the budget and you do not implement cuts, your vote to reject the budget is purely ceremonial. And after a period of time uh from the date that the mayor provides the budget to the council, if you do not either cut it or approve it, it will automatically go into effect. And that is irrespective of whether or not the council has voted no, no on the mayor's budget. So what does this mean? It means the council has one of two things it can do. It could either say, okay, we like the budget as is. Here it is, approved, and we're good. Or it can cut. Once the council makes a cut, the cut is fine. The cut cannot be undone, and the cut gets implemented into the budget. The mayor does not come back and ask for a permission to have an amended budget. It's, we've cut it, that that cut has been effective. And as a result, the budget is now what the mayor asked minus that cut. The mayor can come back at later dates and say, well, I know you cut that amount out, but I'm asking permission to put it back in. Um, and then the council can always decide, alright, I I either do or do not want to put it back in, but the council has no obligation to do that. Um, and that happens annually in late spring, early summer. Municipal budgets go into effect July first. They run July first to June thirtieth. And we have to approve the budget before the effective date of that fiscal year. The window can be even smaller if the mayor gets us the budget in advance, because then there's a, I think it's, I don't know the exact timeline, but I think it's about forty-five days. You have to approve the budget after the mayor provides it. So if he provides it on May, on May first, you only have to June fifteenth, for example, to act on, not June thirtieth. Okay. Another general power of the council is the power to write the laws of the city. Again, we saw that on full display earlier today. So uh ordinances in the city can only be adopted by the council, and under our form of charter, they require what are known as three steps for passage. First, second, and third step. This is a really confusing concept to people who are not from Springfield or who don't know the legislative history behind all this. And a lot of other communities do not do it this way. The reason for the first, second, and third step of ordinances uh is one that goes back to when we used to have a board of aldermen and a common council. So the room that we sit in today is the board of aldermen's room. The room that the school committee meets in is the room of the common council. And before the advent of modern government in Springfield, the aldermen were basically the equivalent of ward councilors, and the common council were the at-large councilors, elected at large. And it was kind of like a house in a sen. And the ante room, which still exists and is still called the ante room in between the two chambers, is where they would meet in conference committee to work out the different bills that they had passed, just in the same way that it works in Washington. And so uh many years ago, they got rid of that form of government. They consolidated just into a city council, eliminating the common council and eliminating the board of aldermen. And uh we are the one branch of legislative government, so there is no need for a conference committee. But the reason I tell you all that is because that is where the first, second, and third step process started. So the first step was committee on enrollment. The second step uh was committee on ordinances. And then the third step was to be ordained. And so the reason they had these steps in the process was so that there could be an opportunity for conference committee in between. And the councilors would actually meet and make sure that the law was in appropriate form and meet with the law department during those first, second, and third step processes. So it's an artifact of a time long past. And uh the way we use it today is we use it to sort of slow down the steps, the process, for passing an ordinance. Because when you do that, it's a law, it's a big deal, it's different than just spending money, it's permanent. Um, and so currently, we have first, second, and third step process. First step uh is a voice vote. Voice votes, councillor Govan and Perez, you've probably never seen one because we don't do voice votes anymore in the era of Zoom. Because of open meeting law, everything has to be a roll-call vote. But when we eventually do make it back to the chambers, you'll see that a lot of the things that we do on Zoom as a roll-call vote will actually happen as a voice vote, uh and the meetings will move a lot quicker. So one of those things is first step on an ordinance. The first step is usually a voice vote, and then after that, it's supposed to go to the committee on enrollment. There is no committee on enrollment. Um, there is also no committee on ordinances. Instead, our rules delegate that authority to the general government committee. And so when I first started on the council, Wayman Lee used to have a big, like, stamp, Phil will remember this, have a big, like, stamp uh like station at his desk. And everything would be in writing. We didn't have iPads. And he would stamp it for approval on a committee of enrollment. And he would literally walk around the chamber and go to the members of the general government committee and say, you know, can you sign saying the committee on enrollment just met and approve this to go to second and then a third step for committee on ordinances? So we don't do that anymore either. And instead, what happens is, after it takes first step, it is automatically ready to go on the next agenda. And uh sometimes this leads to some confusion because councilors say, well, aren't we sending it to committee? Or did we actually take first step? And this distinction is really important because it can delay you if you're not careful. So when you take first step, the rule is it goes to the committee on enrollment, which doesn't exist. So there will be no meeting of the committee on enrollment. Uh, and it will automatically appear for second and third step on the agenda at the next available regular meeting, okay? If instead of taking first step, somebody says, well, I really like this ordinance, I'm gonna make a motion that we send it to committee, and we'll send it to committee on enrollment, and then we can take second and third step at the next meeting. Well, that person has inadvertently made an error because if you send it to committee instead of taking first step, you haven't approved the first step before you take the second and third. So when you come back at the next meeting, what's on the agenda? First step approval, and you start basically from scratch. And um and that can be a big time issue for folks, and it and it and it does come up pretty often. And it can be confusing if it's not sort of explained in that way. And um now conversely, sometimes it's up for first step, and people want to send it to committee. They're not ready to take first step. They think it needs more study, so they could send, I want to make a motion to committee on public safety, or finance, or economic development, or whatever. And that can happen, but then at the next meeting, the first vote is on first step. You can't take first, second, and third step all in one meeting. That's the law. The only way you can do that is if there's an emergency. If there's an emergency, you have to declare an emergency and state what the emergency is. I tried it once in twelve years, and the emergency that I stated at the time, which didn't pass muster from our colleagues, was um snow. I had an ordinance that was on to talk about what happens if uh somebody parks illegally during a snowstorm. And I made a proposal, I said, well, let's just do first, second, and third step all at once. It's an emergency. There's a snowstorm coming on Wednesday. Today's Monday. We need to do this now. They didn't agree, but probably correctly. But you know, that's the only type of circumstance where you can take first, second, and third step in the same meeting. There is a, there is a rule that lets you take second and third step in the same meeting. And there is a, you can suspend the rules and take second and third step at the same time in one vote. You cannot take first, second, and third step all in one vote, and you cannot take them all in one meeting unless there's an emergency. And I've, I, there hasn't been an approved emergency like that in the time I've been on a council. Okay. Last, um, okay, we'll just, you hear often, I'll just talk a little bit about the rules here. And and like, for example, I I talked about suspension of rules to allow you to do second and third step as one vote. That's known as rule twenty-two C. It's a council rule. It says second and third step are separate. You can suspend it and do them as the same vote. One thing that I've found, and um, I don't know, I guess maybe councillor Hurst, if he's listening, I'd be interested in his take on it, is that when we used, when we started doing that, like, four years ago, we started suspending rule twenty-two C, the purpose was to avoid two separate votes. The idea was, alright, everybody knows what's going on here. We're ready to pass second and third step. Why are we gonna take one vote on second step and then pause, and then come back and take another vote on third step? If you voted for second step, you're definitely gonna vote for third step. It doesn't make any sense. So we started, I think, under councillor Hurst, right around then, started suspending rule twenty-two C, and it'd make it go a lot quicker. So you'd say, okay, all those in favor of suspending rule twenty-two C? Everybody says aye. Takes five seconds, and then you'd immediately move to third step, right? Well, the problem is that in the advent of Zoom, you can't do a voice vote. So what's happened the last basically two years is Marcus will say, well, I wanna, I want to suspend rule twenty-two C. Right? And then somebody says, okay, let's suspend it, and then you gotta do a roll-call vote. And I've never had the energy or the um or the reason to really raise it, but it's kind of, when you think about it, it's sort of a silly thing to do because why don't you, at that point, why don't you just take vote on second step? Right? Like, you're suspending a rule to avoid a vote, but then you have to vote on suspending the rule. So um it's not, you know, it's just sort of an interesting academic angle. I'm not so sure that it really makes much of a difference in our meeting, but if you understand it, then on our meetings, sometimes when the wheels fall off the bus and people are asking all sorts of questions and confused as to what, you know, who's on first and who made what motion, it's, if you can remember this stuff, it's really helpful. Speaking of suspension of rules, uh if you want to suspend a rule like twenty-two C, any councillor who objects can stop it. So a suspension of rule requires unanimous approval of everyone who's there. It's not simple majority, it's not supermajority. Suspension of rules mean one person say they want to enforce the rule, that's it. Stop right there. You can't suspend the rule. Time this comes up most often is when somebody wants to take some, something out of order on the agenda. The rules say, you're gonna hear it in the order in which it's listed on the agenda as organized by the council president. So if councillor Fenton says, I want to hear item number thirty-two, any one of our other colleagues objects, you can't hear item thirty-two because that's not what the rules say. The rules say you go in order. Another rule that's regularly suspended is rule nineteen. Yeah, all those in favor of suspension of rule nineteen, right? What is rule nineteen? Rule nineteen says the financial orders require two separate readings before the city council. So anytime money is coming or going by a financial order out of the city, that rule says, and it's, it's archaic, it says it has to be two separate meetings to do that, right? So let's say they want to spend some money on school buses, and councillor Govan is worried it's a little bit too much money. And then it comes time for a vote on the ord, on the order, and the order passes, right? And councillor Govan didn't like it, and she thought we should have had some more time to think about it. So immediately after, or could be immediately after, immediately before the vote takes place, there'll be a vote on suspending rule nineteen. If councillor Govan votes no, then that matter, even though it passed, has to come up for a second vote at the next meeting, right? So councillor Govan will have some people who who are frustrated with her about the school buses being delayed. But if her goal was to delay the final approval, she's achieved that by objecting to the suspension of rule nineteen when it comes up. Very rarely happens, but you can do it. Okay, um, let's see. Um, okay. So all of the things that we just discussed, the council having the authority to do, the council has the authority to do by majority vote. There are a few things that require a supermajority. So a majority vote is not a majority of those present, it's a majority of councilors in total. So it's always seven, no matter what. We have thirteen councilors, majority is seven. If there's only ten councilors there, a majority is not five, it is not six, it is still seven. And some of the things that require a supermajority are uh special permits, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, bond authorizations, appropriations from stabilization reserve, those require a two-thirds vote majority, or overriding the mayor's veto. The mayor has the authority to veto any ordinance that the council puts forward. Uh, he also has the authority to sign it and make it effective into law, or he has the authority to take no action, and after twenty days, it will automatically go into effect. If he vetoes it, and that's happened a few times, it'll come back to the council with a written description of the reason for the veto, and sometimes they're pretty short. And um and then the council can override the mayor's veto by a two-thirds majority. That's what we did, for example, with changes to the residency ordinance and with changes to the um police commission ordinance. Both of those were overridden by veto overrides. Alright, so that is the part of the presentation that I have that relates just to like the charter and um chapter forty and chapter forty-three. You know, you guys have any questions? Anybody has any questions about that? We can have a discussion about it. The rest of the presentation is gonna focus on forty A, and then it'll conclude with a brief discussion about some of our rules that come up that can be confusing, like uh, you know, motion to continue, move the question, those kind of things. Anything?
I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Okay, okay, cool. Alright, so, okay, so forty A. And then we have Phil as the planning expert who can fill in, brooch, and uh opine, opine and assist me.
Councillor Fenton.
Yeah.
Just for notification, I was at the, I was a commissioner for the Board of O P O for almost four years.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Z B A. So you've got that down pat.
Good, good old days. No more comments.
Well, thank you. So so forty A controls not just, to councillor Perez's point, controls not just the city council, but also controls what the planning board can do and what the Z B A can do. So under forty A, we have two main powers. There's more, but two main powers. There's the special permit power, and there is the zone change power. So special permit under the zoning ordinance, uh it might say, for example, you can put a used car lot in this area of town, but only with a special permit from the city council. And there'll be criteria that we're supposed to evaluate and consider when determining whether or not we can grant that permit. And same for drive-throughs or whatever type of uses coming for us. It's Phil planning and the building department's job to make sure that when somebody comes in and asks to build something, that if it needs a special permit, they stop them. And before they let them proceed, they make them come to the city council and go through that process. When they do, um, maybe Phil, if you could talk a little bit about like, when somebody comes into planning and says, I want to do a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts, like, what, what are the steps that you tell them to take from there?
Uh, yeah, so usually they're either coming after stopping in at the building department
or they're coming directly in because they've been told to by code enforcement that they need a special permit for whatever business they're operating. When they, when they come in, we have a preliminary application that starts with the planning department. And it requires them to fill that out. They submit it back to me. A formal application is then typed up. The formal application needs to be signed by not only the petitioner, but also the, the owner. They submit that formal application back with a check for two fifty and, and they do, they are required to submit a site plan. Um, in most cases, the site plan just kind of shows the layout of the, of the property. Um, you know, for, for instance, a used car lot, we wanna see how many cars they're going to hold on the on lot, where they're gonna be parked, where your customers are gonna park, you know, when, on more larger projects. You know, you'll, you'll offer for a new McDonald's or a new drive-through, you'll get the building elevations and all the other stuff. Um, I do wanna stress that, that when they come in, we do recommend um, as part of the special permit process that they go to the neighborhood council. I need to stress to the city council that that's not a zoning requirement. So I do my best to tell people they should, you know, I give them the information, but at the end of the day, it's the petitioner's responsibility to do that. And if they tell me they don't want to, you know, it's not something that will stop the special permit from going forward. It may affect your votes, but um, we, it's just, it's just simply a recommendation, but we do try and provide that to everybody who comes in to to go see the recommendation. I always say, if, you know, odds are, if you, if you get to the city council and you haven't, they're probably gonna tell you to go see them. So in order to speed up the process, we do recommend that they, they check in with the neighborhood council and obviously on more kind of uh, contention special permits. You know, we, we, I certainly stress to them that it's certainly better to get the neighborhood recommendation than to come in with one that they're gonna oppose and then, you know, cause, you know, one of the things that we've, we've found out with, and I try and let people know this with, with the Zoom requirements, because of the amount of text that is now needed in these advertisements, the costs for these ads have gone from about six hundred dollars to about fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. Because special permits have to be advertised twice. Zone changes have to be advertised four times because it's twice for the planning board and then twice for the city council. So they, they can get up to four thousand bucks for a zone change. So, so I try and let people know that, so they're aware of that before they get hit with it, but um, that's, that's a biggie. So then once the, you know, one of the other requirements for a special permit, just to let people know is I have to complete a tax certification for the property. So I send down the application to the collector's office. They then send me up that they're okay to go, or that there's issues that need to be addressed. You know, there's fines or taxes or whatever owed. I tell people that, you know, the special permit doesn't move forward until I get that tax certification. So unfortunately, there are times where, you know, a, a, you know, a guy who wants to rent the place doesn't realize that the owner of the property owes a good chunk of money. So that, that does stop some of the special permits, but once I get all that information, I then uh, send it down to the city clerk's office to get scheduled for a s, uh, city council hearing. That's when I, I usually, what I try to do is when I, when that, when everything is in, um, I then uh, send out a notice to you guys, once it's in minutes track, to let you guys know when it's coming up for a hearing.
Yep, and um, you know, when we're, when we're voting on special permits or zone changes, we're sitting as what the law calls a quasi judicial body. We're not sitting as a legislative body. When you're a legislative body, you can have all sorts of positions and political, you know, comments, and I think this, I think that, um, when you're sitting as a quasi judicial body, you're really acting in a way as a hearing officer. You have an obligation to hear all the facts uh, before deciding the case. And you have an obligation to uh, make sure that any information that you think is relevant be submitted into the record. Um, you also have an obligation to consider what are the factors we're supposed to be taking into consideration when determining whether or not to allow this uh, this drive-through, for example, or this uh, car lot, or, you know, incinerator, whatever it is. Um, and so, that's a, that is a responsibility that is controlled by law outside of just Springfield's local regs. It's controlled by forty A in the cases. And if and when our decisions are appealed, which sometimes they are, um, they're appealed to court. And when they're appealed to court, the court is gonna look at the record and they're gonna say, okay, what were the criteria the council was supposed to consider? What um, what deliberations did they have? Uh, were there any basis given for the reasons that they voted the way that they did? And were those reasons um, permissible under the law for the decision that they made? So, you know, for example, um, a permissible consideration would be something like lighting or traffic or sound. An impermissible consideration would be where someone's from, or who they hire, or what have you. And um, it doesn't mean that those questions can't get asked and answered in the course of a hearing, but if that's the basis for the decision, um, you're in trouble. You're in trouble. You cannot base it on that. Um, you know, you can't, we ask all the time, where does your work stat, where do your workers live, and what's your commitment to the city? And those questions can be done in a somewhat appropriate to completely inappropriate sliding scale, I would say, in my opinion. Um, but you definitely can't say uh, that the reason for the denial is we don't like who you've hired or where they live. Um, and so that's, that's an example of where forty A kicks in. All special permits require two-thirds majority to pass. Um, and that's two-thirds majority of the council, not those present. Uh, if you are not present at the hearing, uh, you can vote uh, on the application. There is a provision under state law that allows you to vote as long as you file an affidavit with the uh, city clerk saying that you watched the tape, uh, that you're comfortable and you've reviewed all the evidence, and that uh, you feel that you've uh, got the information that you need in order to participate on the final vote. Um, there uh, is a rule that stipulates that uh, a zone change must be heard within sixty-five days of receipt of the application. There's a similar uh, requirement for special permits. Not really so much for us to worry about as it is the administrative staff, who do a terrific job, by the way. Uh, but what we do have to worry about is a ninety-day rule. And uh, ninety-day rule says that after the close of the public hearing, the council must render its decision in writing to the city clerk within ninety days of the close of the hearing. Now, usually this doesn't matter to us because in, in Springfield council practice, we close the hearing, and then we usually vote right then. So, you know, then the law department or the clerk's office has time to write the decision and to have Marcus sign it. And then to have it filed uh, with the city clerk. Um, that doesn't happen that way in every city in town. A lot of cities and towns will close the hearing, and they'll come back at a separate meeting where the council will deliberate and will say, uh, you know, well, we've got the testimony, we're not taking any more testimony, but now let's talk about what we're gonna do. And so in those cases, it matters more about the ninety days. Counselor Hurst wants to say something. Go ahead, Counselor.
No, I was just gonna say, um, Counselor Fenton, can you just speak to um, the level of interaction that folks can have with the petitioner uh, in advance of us voting on a particular matter? I know in the past, there's been, um, you know, there have been some questions around what level of conversations folks can have with an individual petitioner prior to them being uh, heard before our body. Uh, can, can you just speak to that a bit if you have any additional information on that?
It's a great question, and um, it's not a uniquely Springfield issue. So there's some people who say that any contact is inappropriate, uh, when you know you're gonna be having a special permit hearing. Um, I don't think that that's the majority view. Uh, and there's no cases or law that says that it's impermissible or illegal or inappropriate, uh, even inappropriate for a petitioner to be speaking with a member of a special permit granting authority about their application before or outside the hearing. Um, with that said, there's some who feel that if you're on a special permit granting authority, you shouldn't be doing it because the record is going to be reflected only by what discussions take place in open session. And only what evidence is submitted into the open record. So the extremely conservative approach would be, if you know somebody's got an application, don't talk to them at all, except through the public hearing. Practically speaking, that's very difficult to honor, especially in a city like Springfield where we have neighborhood councils. We, counselors are active in their neighborhood associations. We have counselors who are chairs of their neighborhood associations. You attend a meeting, you ask a question, you have a, a conversation outside of an initial public hearing with an applicant. Though that in and of itself isn't an, inappropriate or illegal action. What would make that interaction inappropriate would be if you were basing your decision on information received outside of the public hearing and not ensuring that that information eventually made its way into the public record. What would also make that type of discussion inappropriate would be if you were speaking with a petitioner and telling them the basis for your vote in a confidential way outside of the public hearing. For example, um, you know, the, I don't wanna, you know, give too many bad examples because I don't wanna, you know, make examples that aren't happening, but there's all types of nefarious situations that you could imagine. Somebody says, you know, I'll vote for your project if you hire my sister-in-law, right? Not just inappropriate, also probably a crime. Um, I will uh, vote for your project if you agree to put goose neck lighting on the front of your building because I think it's more aesthetic and consistent with the neighborhood, right? There's an example of something that Counselor Fenton has done with the racing mart on the corner of Armory and Crew, right? That eventually made its way into the public discussion in the council, and it made its way into conditions on the application. But the first conversation I had with the petitioner about that wasn't in the public hearing. It was the meeting that I had with him on the site. So I think, you know, to answer Counselor Hurst's question, the answer is it depends. And the moral of the story is be very careful. And um, when you're having those discussions, just keep in mind that anything that you're representing or determining as a basis for why you're gonna vote yes or no, needs to eventually make it into the public record. Um, and there should be no side agreements or understandings.
Um, thank you, Counselor.
There's also, Counselor Hurst, I would also point to, I remember once upon a time, I can't remember who I circulated it to, but there's a really interesting uh, Massachusetts Law Review article written on exactly this question.
Yes.
It came up because of a piece of litigation in East Hampton. Um, and some of the players will be familiar to many of the counselors on this call. Um, and the whole question was exactly over what Counselor Hurst is raising is what level of discussion is appropriate or inappropriate? And there's this long, like fifty-page article describing in much greater detail than I just did with backup for cases and examples about what is and isn't appropriate in that context. But, you know, I guess the the spoiler alert for that article is that the summary of it is, as I just described, which is, it depends and be careful.
Same with your text messages back and forth as well, right? In the event that something occurs, they will have access to that is, did, did that also, Counselor Fenton?
Uh. Any form of communication, any form of communication, I would say. Um, and whether that's oral or written or electronic, text or voice or through an app, I mean, this is twenty twenty-two. There's a bunch of different ways to communicate. Um, and if it ever did end up in litigation, um, all those communications uh, would be available to public inspection and it, and it raises an interesting question as well, which is what is a public record? And this isn't a, um, you know, this isn't a, a training on public records law. That's for the attorney general to do, but, but generally speaking, as members of the council and elected government, everybody should know that any discussion that you have about municipal business, regardless of the medium through which it is given, is deemed a public record, okay? I have a Gmail account. I use my Gmail account relatively often for municipal business. I also have a Springfield City Hall email address. That does not mean that because I'm using my Gmail account, those records are not public records. There's a whole lot of public records in my Gmail account. And uh, depending on the nature of other discussions, cell phone records would not be immune from that type of consideration uh, as a public record.
Thank you.
Counselor Fenton, I just wanted to uh, bring up one more thing while I, I was thinking about it, cause it has come up uh, you know, in the past. As part of the special permit process, as you guys are aware, I, I send out an analysis to the city council. I just wanted to stress that, that comes from the planning department, you know, the staff, what we do with, with special permits is is we, we review the appropriateness of what somebody is requesting. So we go out, do site visits, we, we look at the general land use, the neighborhood characters, what impact the abutters may or may not have with a specific special permit. Um, and then I provide either a recommendation um, for approval or to not approve. Um, and then uh, what I usually do is attach recommended conditions. But at the end of the day, I wanna stress to the council that that's, is exactly that. It is a recommendation. The city council can accept the ready recommendation. The city council can throw it out. You know, the conditions can be added to, they can be modified, they can be uh, you know, thrown out as well. So um, again, what I send you guys is just simply a staff recommendation for whatever specific special permit is being submitted at that time.
Mm-hmm. Alright, a couple more things about hearings, meetings. Um, the council, these lines have been blurred a lot during the Zoom era. But the council traditionally has one hearings meeting a month, and that is the meeting that is supposed to conduct only special permit and zone change matters. The other meetings during a month are for general business. Um, again, those lines are sometimes blurred and we can sometimes go back and forth, but um, you know, and, and in the, in the advent of Zoom and electronic meetings, there's this whole process of having the hearing opened on one night and then continued to the other. That is not the way that the council traditionally operates, and it's because of compliance with open meeting law in light of electronic meetings. Um, special permits are subject to a thirty-day, excuse me, a twenty-day appeal period uh, after the written decision is filed. Uh, and zone changes go into effect immediately. There is a process to appeal a zone change, but it's much more uh, laborious, and uh, I know we didn't talk too much about zone changes, but zone change is basically you take something from residence A, you convert it to residence B or vice versa, or make it from residential use to a business use. Um, alright, uh, notices, we've talked a lot about notices lately. Uh, for special permits and uh, uh, zone changes, there is a requirement that notice be published in the newspaper, uh, notice be mailed to a butters. Abutters are defined by state law as anyone whose property boundary is within three hundred feet of any other property boundary of the subject parcel. So it's like a radius. And um, those notices have to go out uh, at least two weeks before, and then uh, when the decision is rendered, a butters get notice of that too. Um, they get a notice of decision telling them what happened. Uh, and like I said, notice also goes in the newspaper like Phil was talking about earlier. So, um, if a special permit is denied, uh, there's a two-year prohibition under the law for coming back. So Counselor Allen comes in and he wants a special permit to operate a ice shop on Liberty Street, and it's denied. Um, he can't come back and propose a nice shop at that location on Liberty Street until two years have run past the date of the denial. Um, and that's it on zoning. I've got a couple more things just to say about uh, motions and general like nuanced rules, but anything you wanna add, Phil, to the zoning stuff we talked about?
Oh, the only, the only big thing for zone changes, which I like to stress, is, is unlike special permits, zone changes cannot be conditioned. So, you know, when you're voting on a zone change, you, you have to look at the impacts of the zone change for not only the guy you're looking at, because at the end of the day, you know, this guy can say, I'm doing A, B, and C. You change it to the zoning for, say, from business A to business B, cause he wants to do whatever, a car lot. Once it's business B, he can turn around and sell it, and whatever's allowed under that business B is allowed. So that's, that's a big important factor when looking at zone changes. A lot of, you know, a lot of the neighborhood councils say, okay, I'm good with it for you, but you can't, you know, a special permit, you can say that, but a zone change, you can't. So once it's, once it's rezoned, it's rezoned for whatever the use is underneath that. So once it's, once it's rezoned, it's rezoned for whatever the uses underneath that particular zone are allowed, so that's a biggie.
That's a good point. That's a good point. And the other thing is that zone changes first have to go to the planning board for a recommendation. The board, not the planning department, before they can come to the council. Special permits are reviewed by the planning department, but not voted on by the planning board. Is that right, Phil?
Right. And, and again, the, for the planning board, the, the requirements for the notification are the same, so hearing is held and, and everybody within three hundred feet is notified, as well as the average in the newspaper.
All right, so we've almost gone an hour here, so let me just go over the other things I wanted to talk about. These are all uh relevant to uh rules, so if there's any question about the specific rules, we can talk about them, but basically, we've got our city council rules and orders, they're approved every year. Any change to the rules must be approved by a two-thirds majority. And any suspension of the rules must be approved unanimously. The rules stipulate all types of things regarding which committees are in charge of what, how motions will be handled, and they also have some pretty special provisions that are unique to Springfield, like we talked about twenty-two C, Rule nineteen, uh Rule fifty-four, uh and Rule fifty. There's, there's quite a few in there um that are Springfield-specific and that have come into effect over the years. Generally speaking, if you're making a motion generally and it's not controlled by the very specific city council rules and orders, um, then Roberts Rules control. And Roberts Rules, I got them somewhere, um, are basically ru- rules for parliamentary procedure and how to resolve motions or issues when um the council's rules aren't specific enough to handle that type of situation. So motion to take a recess, you know, motion to adjourn, motion to continue, motion, et cetera, and so forth. Those things are handled generally by Roberts Rules where the city council rules are silent. Once a motion is made and it's properly seconded, no secondary motion can be made until that motion has been disposed of. If I make a motion to committee, Counselor Govan seconds it. Counselor Perez cannot then make a motion to continue. We have to first dispose of the motion that's on the table before we can get to the second motion. Okay, uh two special motions, if you will, uh are the motion to move the question and the motion for reconsideration. So the motion to move the question, this one, my two cents, this one gets abused terribly um and is, and is misunderstood. The way it's supposed to work is when you make a motion to move the question, whatever the question is that's on the floor is supposed to be called right away. So basically, it's reserved for when, and we're elected officials, everybody likes to talk, I've been listening to myself talk for an hour, must be torture. But, you know, you, somebody says, I've had enough here, right? I've, I've heard Mike go on long enough about these stupid rules. I make a motion that we move the question, Counselor Govan. And then it's seconded by Counselor Allen. What you're supposed to do is you stop discussion right there. There's no discussion on the motion to move the question. It's supposed to be that stops discussion, everybody shush, and let's take a motion, let's take a vote on Counselor Govan's motion to call the question, right? Now, the question that's being called is whatever question is currently before the council. If it's just an order for approval of spending money on school buses and there's no motion that's otherwise made, Counselor Govan says, call, I make a motion to move the question, seconded by Counselor Allen, the president's supposed to stop debate, nobody else talks. And if two-thirds support Counselor Govan's motion, there's no more discussion, everything ends, and we just vote on that appropriation for the buses, that's it. And we move on, no more talking. Now, if there was a motion that was on the table, let's say we were talking about the buses, right? And it was an order to approve the buses and uh Counselor Fenton had made a motion to committee. And we're talking about the motion to committee. And then Counselor Govan makes a motion to move the question. It's still a proper motion, but what she's moving the question on is Counselor Fenton's motion to move the question. Excuse me, to motion to commit, right? And so Counselor Govan says, I want to move the question, Counselor Perez seconds it. The president's supposed to stop the debate, take a roll call. If it's two-thirds, then they would call the roll with no further discussion on Counselor Fenton's motion to committee. If Counselor Fenton's motion to committee passes, it goes to committee and you're done. If it fails, now discussion is reopened on the general question about the buses. So that's how move the question is supposed to work. Sometimes people just say move the question or call the question, and sometimes it's not made as a motioned or seconded and it can get confusing. But that's what the real, the rule's supposed to do. And then the other rule that I don't think Counselor Perez or Govan have seen yet, but comes up particularly during controversial discussions, is Rule thirty-three, which is the motion for reconsideration. And um just as my last item here, I'm going to read this for you so that you can be as confused as the rest of us. Okay, so Rule thirty-three says, a vote having been taken, so that means a vote's been disposed of and it either got voted up or down, it shall be in order for any member to move an immediate reconsideration thereof or to serve notice of reconsideration at the next regular meeting of the council. Items upon which reconsideration has been moved will appear on the agenda at the next regular meeting under unfinished business and will be acted on by the council at that time if the original maker of that motion has not called for it, unless it has been withdrawn in writing by this, writing to the city clerk. When a motion to reconsider has been decided, that disposition shall not be reconsidered and no question shall be twice reconsidered unless it has been amended after the reconsideration. A move to reconsider shall not be in order after a final vote on a zone change or special permit, right? So forget about it for zone changes and special permits, you can't do it. But if you, we just approved the buses, right? And uh, and it's easier when you say you denied it, right? So you, you denied the buses, right? And Counselor Govan really wanted us to get the buses approved. And so uh part of the reason why it got voted down is because, let's say there was three counselors absent, right? So some counselors voted against it, so it didn't get the seven votes it needed. But Counselor Govan says, geez, wouldn't it have been great if the other three people who are absent were here, we could have convinced one or two of them to vote yes. So I'm gonna uh do one of two things. That is going to have the choice to either um move for immediate reconsideration, which would be silly unless somebody's going to show up right then and there on the Zoom, right? Or she could post notice for reconsideration at the next meeting, right? So the denial of the bus spending isn't dead and gone. It can come back before us for reconsideration at the next meeting in hopes that it would pass, right? The same works if it passed and you um wanted it to fail, right? You could post reconsideration at the next meeting. Sort of a confusing concept. And it's exacerbated by the fact that the Springfield rule, this Rule thirty-three has changed a lot over the years. And in my opinion, it's really, it really doesn't, the way it reads, it doesn't really work anymore.
Could I ask a question? How many reconsideration on the matter you could do?
Well, that's the other thing, Counselor Perez, you're very stoop, because when we used to do this, people would make reconsideration more than once. You reconsider and then they say, okay, well, I want to reconsider the reconsideration. And then I was like, oh my God. So we, there is a provision in here that says you can only reconsider it once. Only once. So that's a new, I don't remember when we put that in, I think that was like two thousand thirteen or something, but you can only reconsider it once and you have a choice, is it at this meeting or is it at the next meeting? And I honestly, the only time I've ever seen reconsideration at the same meeting was when counselors voted the wrong way because they weren't paying attention and made a mistake. Somebody said no because they thought that that was going to achieve the effect of a yes. But then when that was explained to them after what we had just did, somebody said, oh, no, no, no. Let's do immediate reconsideration now that we understand, we want to, we want to fix that, we meant to vote yes. But it's oftentimes, unfortunately, you know, maybe, well, unfortunately or fortunately, it's used as a weapon sometimes, and if it doesn't achieve the result that you were hoping for, it could be a real pain in the neck by saying, well, all right, let's reconsider it at the next meeting, make everybody wait. All right, and then obviously there's a whole bunch of other rules and we could, you know, spend a week on it, but I didn't want to take up anybody's time more than an hour and um there is a lot, there is a lot, and we have a lot of statutory authority and power. And I think that after today's case, that's only going to be, you know, respected even more. Counselor Hurst, Counselor Hurst, you missed the point earlier where I said, just interrupt me because it's hard for me to watch the hands.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. My, my apologies, you've been doing a good job, I haven't needed to interrupt. Just, just a quick question, um, motion to continue versus uh motion to table. Can you, can you just, I, I still have yet to be able to figure it out, I looked at Roberts Rules of Border. Can, can you just quickly uh highlight what the differences are between the two as you see it?
Yeah, so the answer is, again, very good question, answer is it depends. If you make a motion to continue, you should state continue to what? Continue to the next meeting or continue for two weeks? Or continue until the applicant comes and produces evidence that they own the property, um, for example. And when you do that, a motion to continue uh is not necessarily all that different from a motion to table. So when you make a motion to table, if you're silent on the subject, a motion to table is a motion to table until the next meeting, right? You're laying it over onto the next meeting and you're not necessarily saying any date certain or any other contingency that needs to be met before it's heard at the next meeting. So when you make a motion to table, it's a motion to the next meeting irrespective of any outcome. When you make a motion to continue, you can make it continue to the next meeting, which is effectively the same as a motion to table. But the real purpose of that motion to continue is because you want to state something else. You want to state motion to continue until you prove to me you've got the easement. Motion to continue for two months so that we can read this report, you know? Or, you know, motion to continue to the next meeting, which is effectively the same as a motion to table.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Much appreciated, well done.
Thanks. And sometimes it's like, well, motion to continue until the subcommittee can meet on the subject or something, right? And that's, you know, it's not a date certain, but you've set like a, a contingency that needs to happen in the, in the meantime. So um, you know, it's sometimes I sit around and I think about like, you know, like a long time ago and all these stuffy, old, white, male puritans smoking cigars and, you know, talking in old English and, and some of it survived, right? In our rules and the motions and the parliamentary procedure and um but a lot of it has been streamlined and um, you know, the the key to me was always understanding the difference between like a vestige of the past that doesn't matter anymore, like first, second, and third step. And then also understanding, well, why, how can that screw me up today? Like, why does that, why does that antique rule still matter in twenty twenty-two and how can it help me or get in my way for doing what I'm trying to do for my constituents? And um, you know, it takes a lot of time, but the meetings go a lot faster when we're back in person and can do voice votes again too.
Yeah, the only, Counsel, I just want to say, the only thing with, with the thing that I stress with continuing is specifically when we talk about hearings, you know, it's a little different when we're in Zoom because everything's kind of continued and we never close the public hearing. But it's important to note if you're talking about a special permit or a zone change, that you don't close the public hearing and then say continue. Because once the public hearing's closed, you're done. So especially with public input. So the only other way, I, I, I don't know if there's a way you can reopen it, I don't think there is, but um, I just stressed that to my planning board, that if, if you, if there's more things that you want to discuss specifically, you want neighborhood input or you want to hear from some of the abutters, you just need to make sure that the public hearing isn't closed before you continue a particular matter.
Very important. That's very important, Phil. You can't, you really shouldn't be tabling a special permit once the hearings open, it just can be very confusing, you want to continue it, continue the hearing until the next meeting so that new evidence can come in, even if you're not expecting any. Because once you close the hearing, if you're not ready to vote, that ninety-day clock for constructive approval starts ticking. So you want to leave it, you want to leave it open basically until you're ready to make a decision.
What's important about that ninety days, if you guys don't act within ninety days, the special permit is automatically approved.
That's right.
That's good to know. Yeah, that was my question. How long does it? Yep, thank you.
So uh, hi Gladys, they kind of stole all your thunder, sorry, but I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add or?
The only thing I did want to add was, I had a question and a comment, so a comment on the a butter notification process. Honestly, I think it's something that's pretty simple on our end, uh, the documentation piece. So making sure that you all as a body know that it's happening when it's happened, kind of in real time. This thing I'm going to work on with Krista so that she sends out all of these butter notifications. In the past, we didn't have any mechanism to kind of capture when it was being sent. And so what I'm working on with her is just the expla- explanation, how it's done, the, the timeframe on how it's done, how we do it. And then every time we're going to be doing a special um, the, the notification process, she's just going to send you guys a group email. This is a list of the abutters that were notified on this date via regular USPS first-class mail. So that's kind of a step that we're adding to the process just so that it's, you know, uh, you're getting those whether or not every single counselor is going to read them as they're being sent. But you can go back in your emails and say, okay, we see that these abutters were notified on this date. So that's the one piece. And the other question I had was uh kind of my role as the city clerk during the meetings. When is it okay for me to interject if I have a piece of information that might be relevant to whatever discussion is being um had at the time? And if that's through the president, because sometimes there's information that I have and I end up texting Marcus just to let him know something. For example, when uh, when we have to suspend Rule nineteen or what have you, and then he will let the general body know, or is this something that I can kind of stop and ask for permission to speak and, and notify, because I know when you're in person, it's different. But through Zoom, it becomes a little bit more crowded.
Well, I'll certainly invite Counselor Hurst or anybody else who wants to speak on that to speak on it, but you know, in my experience, Gladys, different clerks have handled it differently and um and different presidents have handled it differently. Ultimately, the parliamentarian is the president, so he or she has the authority to say how the rule is going to be interpreted. With that said, you know, you're the city clerk and if something is being done wrong, especially if you think it's by mistake and because they're not aware, then, you know, depending on the circumstances, may be appropriate to insert yourself and say, no, 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 we got to think about it this way and do it this way. That's a real delicate dance to play because at the same time, you don't want to be, you know, perceived by members of the council as telling them how to vote within their discretion, but you also want to make sure they have the information they need to be acting within the law and are aware of those issues. So certainly whenever a question's posed, and that's often the, it's, it's ordinary for the council president to sort of rely on the clerk for advice and input on the rules and how certain things are conducted. But, you know, when to interject and you're not prompted, that's a, that's a more difficult read. And, you know, certainly if you think something's going the way that it, that it's not supposed to, somebody says something requires seven votes and you know it requires nine. I mean, speak up, right? That's gotta, that's gotta be heard. You know, somebody starts, it's a more gray area and somebody starts asking questions in a special permit that are probably a little bit outside of what's appropriate. Not, probably not the kind of thing, you know, that counselors or administration should be butting in and saying, you know, you really shouldn't be asking that question, that's not an appropriate question. That's, I'd love, I, I don't think I should be the only one to speak on that particular question, but that's my two cents on it.
Yeah, I would agree, um, Counselor Fan. I think if there's something that's going to have implications later on for the entire council, then you ought to speak up without a doubt. And, and, you know, I, I used to rely on the clerk for that, so. Without a doubt, um, and, and, you know, I, I used to rely on the clerk for that. So. So I think that's important. And I think the rest of it, Counselor Finn, pretty much outlined as I would have recommended. Gets dicey when it's other people. Um, but then we're talking about the rules, uh, that. It's definitely something we don't want to miss even as a body. And then I'd also defer to your, your president, I mean, to the president as well, you know, in terms of how he likes to handle it. I never really cared. If I'm doing something wrong, I want to know, so I can correct it. Uh, but if there are ways in which you can, you know, reach out to him behind the scenes, that, that may make more sense. But I, I would defer to you all.
Yeah, I think that's right. And the only thing I would add to that, after having the benefit of hearing what Counselor Hurst had to say is. One thing that I don't think happens enough is I don't, I haven't seen clerks or even lawyers representing the council. Say, I don't know enough. I mean, like, it's perfectly appropriate to not know. And I feel like there's always a lot of pressure to say something and. That's not right. Like it's, it's okay to say you're not sure and I need to check that and can we have a two minute recess? And, you know, when the lights are on and people are watching and there's all this pressure, like my. Unsolicited advice would be just like, don't be bashful about saying. I need to think about that or I need to read that more closely. I need more than thirty seconds. Can we have a five minute recess and do it? And honestly, that does not happen enough. Like in, in the twelve years I've been doing this, the amount of times that that's happened. I could probably count on one hand. And instead, the amount of times that people have said something. And were wrong because they felt pressure to speak quickly, you know, that's in, that's in the more than twenty range. So. That's my.
I, I, I agree with that as well. And I don't think there's anything wrong with deferring to the attorney as well, although they probably have more of a propensity to. To, to, to feel a need to, to speak and attempt to be right, which is, which is also problematic. But I, I definitely, um, there's no problem with deferring to the attorney. And even more importantly, I mean, Counselor Finn was, you know, eloquently laying out the rules. I mean, I think there are some things. You know, that is, that are happening during a meeting where I'm even thinking, Counselor Finn, I want to hear from you. Just because I know it's pretty versatile rules. So, um, it's not an issue. In my opinion, that certainly say, can I have some help or can I have some time and then defer to, you know, someone who has done it before. Not me though.
And not always, and not always me either, but, you know, and in recess, sometimes you can. You can talk about it without having everybody listen to what you're saying too. Like you can say, oh, this, this is what I'm thinking. What do you think, you know?
I think that's a difficult piece that's, that I've seen just as a. Somebody viewed the process before where we had Wayman and Anthony and Tashina be able to. Do it in person in the chambers. They were able to take that recess or put the mic down and ask questions. Ask whoever it was. But I can honestly say that you all as a, a group of counselors as a body have been extremely helpful in. Giving me that real time advice and I'll, I'll also say Phil Dromi. I think collectively, all of you and myself included have enough information to be able to kind of make it. Flow seamlessly, but, you know, being able to take us that tick and stop and answer the question sometimes doesn't happen as much. Um, as I've seen it in the past because of the Zoom.
That's true. All right, thanks.
I have a question, um, because we digested so many laws. Is this a reference that, um, so that I could refer to knowing? All this presentation that was done. Thank you, um, Counselor Fenton. So I will remember what is the forty, what is the nineteen and the thirty-two? So I think I'm addressing that to the clerk. If I could be, you could lead me after, where could I find those information? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do have an outline. I don't want to send it because I don't want. There's some things that I just have in here that are like notes for me. That I don't want other people relying on my legal advice. I mean, I'm. I'm not the council's attorney. I'm also not the council president. I'm not the parliamentarian. I'm just trying to like enumerate. The issues, so, um, I really would rather not share the outline. I'm happy to share any of the statutes and ask, answer any questions in particular. I just, I don't, I want to avoid a situation, Maria, where. Mike Fenton has prepared an outline and then we're in a council meeting and somebody's referring to my outline.
Yes, yes.
That wouldn't be fair, that wouldn't be fair to anybody else. That's elevating my, my standing beyond what it should be. Counselor Hurst.
That's why I dress it to the clerk.
Well, and I was just going to say, Counselor Fenton, is the twenty twenty-two rules and orders i- is what you said in here? Okay, so you could, it could probably send you this, uh, Counselor Perez.
Yeah, yeah, but I just. Okay, yeah, I seen the twenty twenty-two, but it's more in, you know what I'm saying? No, it, not only that, that, um, you know what? I'm taking serious because we are bodies that we could be, we got to be in court. I have been in court when I was in the Board of Appeal. And while you might interpret as a reading, you know, there's some loopholes that are utilized in court. Then, then, then that. So, you know, from that perspective. Um, I want to feel that the law department is there for us as well. And that's exactly, it's not much the reading and the research. It's the other things that it's entitled when it comes to, to this law and applicable. And I'm able to refer to my colleague and say, I don't understand this rule. But also master when we are in a meeting, um. This is totally, and thank you so much. Of what the rules of the city council is when it comes to this legislative part of the law.
Counselor Hurst wanted to, he had his hand up. I put it down.
No, actually, this was something unrelated, but I, I, I agree with Counselor Perez. If there's a way in which, I mean, I. I'm sure she's probably talking and referring to things like the charter, uh, as well as the actual chapter forty-eight laws. Um, if there's any way. She can get it in more of a concise, um, format to not have to go and search for it. I know I just asked you for something similar to that, right, Phil? Just, just the other day. So, I mean, whatever we have, it'd be nice if we could get it out to the council so they don't have to. Work for it, or at least to Counselor Perez. Does that make sense, Counselor Finn?
It, it does, except it seems like a really easy request. It's actually a pretty hard one. I mean, four, forty A is, it's nineteen sections long. And if you, there is an entire volume, I have it in my, my office, there's an entire volume called the Massachusetts Zoning Act. Manual, which is like hundreds of pages long. That speaks in detail about all the things we just talked about and. I would, I don't want to be responsible for highlighting which parts are more relevant than others. I mean, I've done that today verbally. But, you know, there is so much more than just this and what we talked about in this presentation. And there is no like such thing as a one to five page cheat sheet. Where a lawyer would summarize this for you because. That would, that would imply that that's all there is. And I don't want to imply that because there's so much more. Does that make sense? For references and send you the laws, but you're going to look at them and you're going to want to strangle me because it's going to be like very verbose. It's going to be very long.
Um, I have to go Counselor Fenton and Counsel Perez and first and Allen. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Phil and Gladys. You guys have a good night.
Thanks, Mike. I gotta go as well.